So the first thing we have is draft meeting minutes of Wednesday, August 20th. Anybody have any corrections, deletions, errors, omissions? And I'll rephrase my opening statement, it's not August 20th, it's September 17th for this meeting. That would be the first correction. What do you think? We have a motion to approve the meeting, 10 minutes.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
So tonight, David, we're going to sit you as a voting member. I'm a little short on what is here. Okay, first item, 103 Main Street, units four and five. Other claim considered application of Brian Dominguez for a special permit pursuant to Appendix A of the town of Westford zoning bylaw Golf Course Golf Club. Okay. Can I have a motion? Open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tell us who you are, what you want to do.
All right, my name is Brian Dominguez. I own this place on the 103 Main Street here called CJ Lynx Golf. I'm here tonight just requesting a special permit to allow an indoor golf facility which the zoning bylaw classifies as golf club use. CJ Lynx will provide a year-round recreational space for Westford residents, local golfers, high school teams, and especially during the winter months when golf isn't possible. The business operates entirely indoors and by appointment, so traffic will be minimal and spread out. We'll use the existing parking and utilities with no changes to the building exterior. The use fits the commercial character of Main Street along with the barber shop, convenience store, and other small businesses, and will be a quiet, family-friendly neighbor with no outdoor noise or lighting. I believe CJ Lynx Golf will have a positive impact on the community by adding recreation, supporting local partnerships, and contributing to the town's tax base. Thank you for your time.
Okay. I guess the only question I have, just like I find the interior layout here. I noticed you had what you're calling a lounge area.
Yes, sir.
So what is the purpose of that?
Sports viewing. Have a couple of couches and TVs. That's all it is.
And is it your intention to serve liquor there?
No, sir.
Okay. Food?
No, sir.
Bring your own?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
So they'll be able to bring their own alcohol?
Yes, sir.
And I'm just questioning the available parking spaces. You've got three simulators, four individual pro-simulators, 12. They're all going to drive their own vehicles. How many parking spaces do we have there, do you know?
I believe it was 27?
In the whole lot?
I believe so.
Thirty.
Thirty.
Say 27, that was all. Thirty. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we could just get, for the minutes taker, the name of the person who spoke.
Yes. Give us the microphone, give us your name.
My name is Erzil Patel. I represent Geisha Realty, the owner of 103 Main Street, as well as Main Street Convenience. There's 30 parking spots in the plaza itself.
I mean, I think it's a great idea, but then you've got the employees at the House of Pizza. They take up the parking spaces alongside Main Street.
Is there parking behind that building?
No, sir. Septic.
Septic?
Yeah. Yeah, peak time's going to be, you know, your 6:00 to 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., where the barber shop's closed at that point already. In the House of Pizza, to your point, yes, the employees park there, but nobody dines in unless it's one of the high school guys or gals that come and walk in, as I've seen in my time that I've spent there the last three months.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it's a great idea, but I've been down there on a Friday night when the academy's got a football game going on, and you circle through the parking lot, going, okay, where am I going to park?
Yeah, good thing is golf season and football season don't kind of work out. So football season will be over and indoor golf season will be...
Like I said, don't get me wrong, I mean...
No, I understand.
...but golf is going to be there year-round, you know? Like I said, I just don't want it to get to be a hassle down there, you know? There's no marked fire lanes, okay? So the fire department, if they have to respond there, get the fire alarm panel, stuff like that, so...
Yeah.
Just the potential of introducing a lot more vehicles, you know? So which spaces you taking? You taking the one that says...
Karate.
Yes, sir.
Karate? Yes, sir.
Soon?
Let's hope so. See what happens tonight.
What are your hours going to be?
It'll be between like 8:00. I'm still toying with that idea. It's probably between 8:00 to 10:00, somewhere in there.
8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Yeah.
And what time does the convenience store close?
8:30?
8:30.
I believe.
Is it the convenience store asking to expand their permit for beer, wine, and liquor?
Yeah, yeah.
My suspicion is if that happens, they're not going to close at 8:30, but it might be a bad assumption.
Can I speak on that?
Come to the microphone. Yes, Chair.
My name is Erzil Patel, once again. On that, yes, we are petitioning to do, get a full liquor license, but with the way that the business has been over the seven years that we've owned it, it seems like it's pretty dead after 8:00, which is the reason why we end up closing at 8:00, 8:30. We close at 8:30 on Thursday, Friday, Saturday. That's about it. Otherwise, by after 7:30, it's pretty dead there.
So there's no plans or hopes to go beyond 8:30?
No, there is not.
Okay.
I asked a question, I'm just a little nervous. We're worried about the neighbors across the street with all the cars coming out, headlights and stuff like that. Everything else is there, closing at 8:30 now, the latest. Westford House Pizza closes at 8:00.
More or less the whole shopping area closes down at 8:00, 8:30.
Correct. And now, there's going to be one place that could be potentially pretty busy until 10:00.
But there's lights in the parking lot, right?
Yes, sir.
What time will it open?
Whenever, I believe they're on a time clock with the convenience store. That would then be switched around to wherever I would be closing or opening. Which electrician can take care of that?
No, I'm just saying, if we have outdoor lighting in a parking lot, to his point, headlights may or may not be... Not relevant, but not be as bad if the parking lot is lit up at that time.
Understood, yeah.
So there's lightings under the canopy of the whole store plaza. Those lights shut off at 9:00 right now. Auto adjustable to autonomy that there is a light that's on a pole installed by National Grid that does not turn off, not facing the house, it's facing the plaza.
Faces the building.
Facing the building.
Big yellow one.
Is this your first location? Or do you have others?
First one. First go.
So would you have a problem with condition this permit based on a time, so in other words, we need to prove it based on the fact that you're going to close at 8:30?
I would ask for 9:00. Whenever the lights in the canopy go off.
So what's going to be left in there for businesses? You're going to have the convenience store, pizza, you're taking Tuesdays. What's in with these sports shops?
Barber shop, Westford Barber Shop now.
And what's beyond that?
Cabinry, please.
So unit one is currently vacant. Unit two is CSA, or not CSA, BPI, Building Professionals. They're not there, it's just showroom type of thing. They come there once a week or so. Number three is Barbershop, Westford Barber Shop. Four and five will be Brian. Six is Westford House. Seven is Main Street Convenience.
So pizza and convenience store, in and out, in and out, in and out. Barber shop's in and out, in and out. Barber shop's a 30-minute in and out.
And they close at 6:00. Sorry if I'm not mistaken.
Does anybody in the audience have to speak in favor of this or against this? Tell us your name.
My name is Frank Sherman. I live across the street at 104. The only question I have is hours.
Yes, sir.
You say the 8:00 to 10:00. Is that closed, gone, sign off, or is that your last appointment?
Closed, gone, sign off.
Okay.
Yeah, you can book beyond the hour time, so if you have 9:00 times, ideally, 9:00 time slot, you're out by 10:00, that's it.
That was my only question with this. And I do, I catch the lights coming across, so, but I've lived with it. I've been there 53 years, so it's like...
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My question maybe for more, the building owner, as a condition, can we have them work with the fire department to designate some type of fire lane down there? Because the potential now is that you could get a lot of vehicles...
So what does that entail, Dan?
You have to work that out with fire department, fire prevention office. Might just be some signage, might be some minor striping, I don't know.
Yeah, that's something we can definitely work out with the fire department. We currently have one spot that's striped in the middle of the plaza, as well as on the side of the plaza where the dumpsters is, that's all striped, so no cars are parked there or along the side of the building at all. But it is something that we will go run it through the fire department and do signage and all that as well.
Anybody else in the audience have anything to say for or against? Okay. About the board, any more questions, comments?
Are you all set with the hours?
So I think I would go 9:00 max.
To what? Close or have the last appointment late?
Last appointment 8:00, out of there by 9:00.
But you can give them an extra half hour. I think 10:00 is a little too late.
Yeah, I do too. I do too. Because what I don't want to see happen is a bunch of guys go golfing at 7:00 and 8:00, and they sit in the back room and drink beer till 9:00.
Hundred percent.
9:00.
Or bring it up into the parking lot.
Yeah, or whatever. Anybody else have any conditions?
Just that they work with the fire department.
Is there any objection to an earlier start time for some of those early birds like myself who have small children that are, wake up early, do a little work, and then come back home type thing?
You start at 8:00, right?
I wake up at 5:00. I guess we'll have to ask my neighbor if that would, is that too early, like a 7:00 a.m. even?
Personally, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I don't have a problem.
When's the convenience store open?
Yeah.
Convenience store opens at 7:00. The barber shop also opens at 7:00.
So 7:00 seems to be reasonable.
Yeah, thank you.
And then overnight, there's deliveries to Westford House that happen like 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, that they come and drop it off, and then you get newspaper delivered overnight as well. Yeah, papers come in before 9:00 in the morning.
So appears that the conditions would be, they're going to work with the Westford Fire Department, fire lane, 8:00 is the last booked appointment, to be out of there by 9:00, and a start time at 7:00 a.m. Does anyone have anything else? Need a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So in front of us now is a special permit, Appendix A, town of Westford zoning bylaw Golf Course Golf Club, Lynx Indole Golf. We're probably located at 103 Main Street, unit four and five, with the conditions that are 7:00 a.m. start time, they go to work with the Westford Fire Department, and I will leave that up to staff to regulate and monitor that part of it. And the last appointment booked is 8:00, and they're out of there by 9:00.
Do we need to have to mention no alcohol, if he served by the owner or food? Is that...
He's going to need a license to do it.
Yeah. Just to say he can't serve it. I mean, I think they can be DYO'd, it's going to be Westford Convenience and Westford House walked in by people, I'm sure.
Is that right?
Just want to point out that offering such services would require additional permitting for both parties, so I don't know that you need to actually take any action on that. If they were to serve alcohol there, that would be a whole other animal, as well as the service that...
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second?
Okay. Dave?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes. So the town has 14 days to read a decision, a 21-day appeal period, and you heard the conditions?
Yes, sir.
If you have any questions, who's the guy you want to talk to?
Let me do the answers.
Good luck.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate every time.
Successful adventure.
Thank you. Hope to see you there.
See? 7:00 a.m., sorry. Nope. Anyway, I guess the next order of business is the volunteer activity forms?
Yes, Mr. Chair, as you recall, last meeting, you interviewed two candidates, two did not, were unable to attend that meeting. You did reach out to them, make them aware of what the board was potentially considering tonight, acting on candidates that you interviewed last month. You wanted and requested that Mr. Earl would review that video so he could actively participate in the discussion. So I think that's where we're at. The board's interviewing two candidates, and you're here to see if you're willing to make a recommendation to the select board, who is the appointing authority, to fill the vacant alternate seat on this board.
Okay. So Elizabeth Gaber and a name I can't pronounce for the two that were not here, didn't respond to our request, so they're not in consideration at all in my mind. We have Andrew Spanos and Megan O'Connell who are here. And so before the meeting started, or before we started this part of the meeting, I suggested, as a result of discussion with the board, that we would interview each candidate separately. In fairness to the other candidate, the candidates would wait in the hall until it was their turn. And Andrew went first. Megan cited that it was an open meeting law, and she requested that she didn't have to It is an open meeting law, but it's my open meeting. So that was the path that we took. I think there were some good answers from each candidate. It's kind of a tough board because it's not a board that you walk into and have all kinds of experience in because every day is a different day. And we take each case on its merits, and there's no precedent really set from previous cases. So based on what I heard and saw, my recommendation would be Andrew Spanos. That's me personally. I'll open it up to the rest of the board, maybe starting with Jeff.
Yeah, I would agree with Andrew Spanos.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
No.
Okay. Scott?
I think they both had good answers. One thing that stuck in my mind was when the previous case was coming before us, Megan stepped up to the microphone and was talking about redesigning, or redesigning the addition or whatnot, and unfortunately, we vote on what comes before us. That was a little tentative for me, but I would probably go with Andrew.
To your point, you know, it's our job to take the plan that comes to us and either approve it or disapprove it. We're not architects, we're not engineers, well, some of us are, but typically, when a plan comes to us, the petitioner has exhausted all the possibilities before they get to us, probably because they've talked to staff and engineers and everybody else to come up with, hopefully, the best plan for them. Dan?
I was impressed with both candidates. I liked the answers. I would kind of agree with Scott F., that we've got to, we're not in to redesign the application, we've got to go on the merits. The credentials for both were impressive, but at the end of the day, I think I would go with Andrew also.
David? I know your wife. This is on TV.
Well, I think it's pretty hard to see a canned thing. I guess the only comment I would have, as they told candidates were qualified, and I think, at some point, I think the board as a whole has to look at the balance of the board. Because today, it's, isn't necessarily biased, but it's really heavily weighted to the business community. You know, if you looked at the backgrounds of the people on the board, we don't have a lot of difference, you know, like pure residents. And I remember going back in time, you guys may not have ever met Sam Frank, but he was always talking about balance on the board. So I think I would go with the consensus of the board, but just say, if there's another opening, I think it would be important to open it to a broader community, just a resident, if you will, a homeowner, dah dah dah, who has a different, who has no, if you will, business interest. Because a lot of times, that's a factor in the decision.
I guess fortunately or unfortunately, you know, we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied because we get citizens' activity forms, people who volunteer...
I understand, but I think Sam's point was that he really wanted people to go out and advocate, sort of encourage people who might not appear, and that was good. That goes back probably 15 years ago when we were really talking about the beginning of 40Bs and really trying to open up for more housing. But it's, it's really changing, and I, you look at all of this stuff where they're going to start converting places like, what do you call them, the industrial parks, to really mix, and that will take, I think, a broad, a broader view. I agree with the board, I think that people were qualified, had some interesting experience.
Okay. Well, based on what we've heard here tonight, I think that our recommendation towards, to the selectmen, is going to be Andrew Spanos. Megan, I want to thank you for applying, and these forms don't go away, so if there becomes another vacancy, we'll certainly call you again. This board typically hardly ever turns over, but due to some sad circumstances, it has turned over. So do we need to vote?
A vote would be appreciated, sir.
So can we have a vote to recommend Andrew Spanos for the, it's not, it's the alternate seat? Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So what? Let's get Matt out of here. So Matt, you're up. You've got a minor modification for 164 Main Street. You want to give us a...
Yes.
...version, what's going on there?
For the record, I don't drink or play golf either, so... Thank you for being here tonight on behalf of the Moore Brothers, General Contracting, and Melissa Robbins, who couldn't be here tonight, she had another meeting, and Drake it. But it's for the property at 164 Main Street. It's up on the screen. This is the former red house that sits kind of up on the hill that was surrounded by the Anderson Fruit Farm. It's been under construction for a couple of years. We got a modification, or we're here tonight for a modification of the special permit that was issued by this board for the conversion of a two-family into a three-family. And we're here tonight, the modification is to request a modification of the parking area, which is shown in red, there's three spaces that we're moving. The previous approvals allowed not only the conversion of the structure from a two-family to a three-family, but it included the conversion of that barn, the big red barn that sits to the left, and kind of is the first thing you see when you're driving by, and it was to be converted into a three-bay garage. The barn was recently condemned by the building inspector. It's had a hole in the roof since, even before this project started. There's been some slight delays with construction. Things are progressing very well. They're trying to wrap things up. The landscapers are scheduled to be out soon and clean everything up. But unfortunately, the barn has deteriorated beyond repair, and it's scheduled to be demolished. That was not anything that we initiated. That was a decision by the building inspector. I know that they met on site last week, and it was the historic commission and the building inspector and representative of the Moore Brothers General Contracting, they talked about taking down the foundation and trying to preserve the foundation for archaeological feature preservation, but it doesn't really work for queued parking anymore, where you would have, now you'd have stacked parking where you don't have a garage space there. So we're moving those three spaces that were dedicated to be inside the barn closer to the... So removing those three spaces that were dedicated to be inside the barn, closer to the units, kind of in front of the units, and to be honest, I think it's, it kind of makes a little bit more sense. Certainly a less walk. It doesn't look very far in this plan, but when you're standing there and you look off to where the barn is, it's a much shorter walk and it just seemed. We are also gonna reconfigure the walkways a little bit to connect those spaces. It did make it onto another plan that we issued to the conservation commission. But I didn't think of it in time for this board. So the walkway will just be configured to connect the spaces. Conservation has already reviewed this and approved this. A portion of the work is within a hundred foot of the wetland buffer. And we're here tonight to ask for the minor modification of the three parking spaces.
So, Jeff?
I just want to chime in in terms of what we said about the building inspector or our building commissioner. Our building commissioner was provided evidence from a qualified licensed professional that stated that the barn structure was in fact not safe and should not be renovated. It was that bad of a condition. So I don't want people thinking our building commissioner went out there and, you know, did this. He reacted to factual information received from qualified licensed professionals. And what Mr. Waterman referred to, there is a provision in our demolition delay bylaws. The barn's very old. The commissioner is in the process of getting ready to issue an emergency demolition permit under that provision of our general laws. So I think that is going to happen very soon. It is imminent. And our commissioner made it very clear, it's coming down, it's all coming down. So it's not an if, it's a when, so. That's it.
So are you gonna have to have another curb cut there, Matt?
Nope. Nope, nothing changes with the, like, the access drives.
What about the two spots in the middle of that stone wall?
Nope, that's our driveway there. So that's, the main street is further out and it's not shaded, so. They have a horseshoe shaped driveway that.
Yep, yep, sorry, yep, I get it.
So it's, we already had two spaces to kind of spread out some of the spaces. That unit C is pretty far to the right, so we were trying to kind of spread the parking out initially. And now we're kind of just following through with a couple more.
So what's gonna be, what's gonna happen with that barn area?
They want it backfilled. So the barn is actually two-story. Where the parking was, was the second floor. There's a lower kind of drive under that faces Main Street. The goal is to leave the foundation intact and just backfill it in place. They want the preservation of the foundation intact. Backfill it all the way up? Yep. And I wasn't at the meeting, but I believe it's just to preserve the archaeological preservation of the foundation. So it's gonna all get me backfilled, no one's gonna be able to see it? I'm hoping that they'll leave some of it kind of showing, kind of like as a feature. I think it would be neat, but. See, my question was, if you're gonna raise it, why, you're gonna have three parking spaces in there, inside that footprint anyways. Why couldn't they still be there? They'd be stacked. So you'd have to, like, park a car behind a car. So our preference was to have single access parking. Instead of having the requirement to queue your cars. Is that what you're gonna do if the barn was able to be saved? They would be in a garage. Which I don't know, somehow I think that's differently, I don't know why. But I think when you pull into your garage, it's sometimes, it is the exact same, yes, absolutely. I just think with the garage door, it functions a little differently. I don't know why. There is over extra spaces. I mean, I think there's eleven spaces for three units. So there's plenty of parking on site. It is a lot of parking.
Anybody have any other questions, comments?
So the barn won't be landscaped or anything? Aloned and seated. So it will be grass on top? Yep. In amongst the foundation that's staying? Correct.
There is no one in the audience other than board members, so I don't think we have to ask for any participation of the audience on this. Anybody have any questions or concerns or conditions?
Do we really need those other two spaces? Is there enough, is there enough parking without those? I don't think it would hurt the visitors.
Yeah, is there parking, yep?
They can choose to use it, they can choose to use the six spaces. Yeah. But it's there if they need it. That's true. That's it.
Chair, if I could just request, maybe we could just, for the zoning record, just have a finalized form that shows the connecting sidewalk.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, just for the zone file.
Okay. So can we have a motion to approve this minor modification to add three parking spaces? Not really where before.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're all set?
Hopefully, we'll be wrapping things up out there.
So the next order of business, they included town meeting protocols in our pocket. If there's anything that somebody has a burning desire to discuss, we can.
The board already did vote recommendations on two of the arguments, I believe. All four of the zoning. All of them. So just a matter of if there's anything else that we wanted to discuss. If not, that's fine too. But we just wanted to give you the opportunity to do so for a town meeting in less than two weeks.
We already took a position on two of the zoning bylaws, right? All four?
Four.
Four.
And so I did, not relating to this, but I did get an email from the chair of the planning board. And the request that we made to retain certain things that we do. They agreed with and made a vote in favor of that, so. That's all said. So anybody got anything on this? Okay. Hearing none and saying none, I guess we're good to go.
Okay. Very good.
Anything else staff, staff has? Discuss.
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let's meet a motion for a meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.